Thinking Commission meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Ms. Johnson, if you call roll, please.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. Calley.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Ms. Qualls.
Here.
Ms. Rainey.
Here.
Ms. Shulist.
Here.
And Ms. Senyard.
Present.
Thank you for joining me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we're a meeting today to cook matters of business. Got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to approval of the agenda as in front of you, which struck the Bozza appointee. Is the only thing that's changed on there?
Motion to approve amended agenda.
First. Rainey with Anderson with a second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you. Go to citizens comments.
The first citizen tonight is Mr. Alfred Hayman.
Mr. Hayman, could you approach here and state your addresses for me?
I'm at 7301 Kempton Court.
Thank you, sir. I'll start the clock. You have three minutes there.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me out. My name's Alfred Hayman. I own a home at 7301 Kempton Court in Aiden Woods, Castleberry Phase One. I have a question for the Planning Commission. Does the developer of Aiden Woods Phase Two, who I believe to be A1 Home Builders, have the correct type of license needed to build the road, base construction, curbs, gutters, and box culverts? The contractor license that I found online for A1 Home Builders indicates that their contractor license has license modifiers MUA, MUC, BCA, BC dash, and it's a small b parentheses SM. Is this, is such a license like this sufficient to be able to build the road? And if not, is there another firm or contractor or subcontractor that has a sufficient license? Next, you may remember hearing about the smoke from the mulch fires that occurred on the property of Phase Two on different days in November and December. I'd like to inform you that I have requested a copy of A1 Home Builders' general liability insurance policy so I may file medical claims against that policy. My request for this information, requests for this information started in early December, and I've been communicating with their attorneys since January 6th. As of this, excuse me, as of this morning, I have still not been provided with that insurance information. I would also like to inform you that I've been getting signatures from my Aiden Wood neighbors on a petition requesting that you require A1 to build single-family brick homes in Phase Two and Three that are comparable to those found in Phase One and that you require the developer to build an alternate construction entrance. The construction traffic has been particularly heavy with large dump trucks as they've been working to build the roads in Phase Two. There were a few residents who were not at home last Saturday when I canvassed Aiden Woods Phase One, but I currently have twenty, signatures of 23 residents. I intend to canvass additional sections of the neighborhood in the next few weeks, and I plan to present the petition to you before your next meeting one month from now. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Second citizen tonight is Mr. Tony Parente.
Hello, Ms. Parente. If you could state your name and address for me.
My name is Tony Parente. I live at 7303 Kempton Court. I guess my question is to the, ladies and gentlemen here is, where are the plans with these homes? We don't know anything as far as what they're going to be all brick or what the, you know, we would like for them to be, some kind of a standard set that somewhat is comparable to what we have existing. Not the size of the home, maybe just like brick exterior would be something we would like, you know, to see, at least keep the value of our homes somewhat, you know. If we build a homeless house maybe out of brick or something, something comparable to that, we're going to lose a lot of value to existing homeowners. And I hope that the, that y'all would take that into consideration whenever that part comes up as far as the, you know, what phases is, you know, that's at coming in the near future. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional comments?
Will that be coming up tonight?
What's that?
The, what they proposed to build there.
Well, that new business item three entertains that development, but I'm not sure in particular. We'll talk about it there.
Okay.
We will go, approval of the amendments from the December 10th, 2021 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Qualls, McDonald. Is that correct or Jenkins?
That was McDonald.
Any discussion?
Did we get copies in the minutes? I didn't see anything in the email.
I do not think they were at the back there.
I'm not going to be able to vote for approval or disapproval of anything if I haven't seen it yet.
You want, we could, if it's appropriate, if the motion, if you remove your second and then in motion, we could defer it. We could vote on it next meeting.
Okay. I will defer my motion till next meeting then.
Move my second.
Okay.
Push it to the next, next meeting. New business item one, Planning Commission elections.
I'll make a motion to nominate Brandon Butler as chairperson.
Thank you. We'll go, we'll go break it down. So this is annually, first month of every, our first meeting of every year. Planning Commission elections, we'll go to item A, PC Resolution PC 01-22. Chairperson will go in order from chair to vice to secretary to second secretary. So we're on item A, PC Resolution 0122, chairperson.
I'm going to nominate Brandon Butler again.
I'll second him.
Thank you, guys. Do we have any additional nominations?
I would like to nominate Emily.
Is there a second?
Just point of clarification, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Fair. Well, I have to act on that.
So there'd have to be a consideration of the motion and the second on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
If the proper, the only step will be if there's a motion to amend the motion on the floor, which I believe the mayor can do and then, or whoever. So if that is the question, there would be a motion to amend the existing motion. You have to vote on the amendment.
Okay.
So.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second for chairperson.
So I can make a motion to amend to add another nominee?
You can move, you can move to, you can move to amend the motion if you so choose. That motion would require a second.
Okay. So I make a motion to amend the motion. This has all gotten very confusing already.
You, you would make a motion to amend the motion to add additional nominee?
You, you, the motion would be to rename, rename the nominee.
Okay.
So if that motion gets a second, that'd be the prevailing motion. If that motion does not get a second, then the original motion carries.
Okay.
Or moves forward, not carries.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would love to, but I have no clue what it is and I'm supposed to be motioning. So tell me again what, what my motion is. You don't know yourself.
Proper, proper would be, you would be making a motion to amend the existing motion to name whomever as chairperson. If that's your preference.
We have a motion on the floor?
It was a motion for nominees. So we're making it a little bit more complex, I think, than it needs to be. I think we just open the floor for nominations.
I was going to say, can I amend the motion to?
Someone else can be nominated and then somebody can make a motion to close the nominations. We do it that way.
Just like we did when we were in school.
Right.
If that's the case, Ms. Qualls' motion was to, Ms. Quall put a motion on the floor to name Commissioner Butler as the chairperson. There was a second to that motion. So there's a motion on the floor. So if you're going to open it for nominees, you're going to need to withdraw that motion and offer nominees. But right now, there's a motion and a second, naming someone as chairperson.
That's what, you understood her motion to just be to name him as chairperson.
Ms. Qualls, your motion was to name Commissioner Butler as chairperson. Is that correct? And there was a second of that by Mr. Calley.
Correct.
So that's the motion and the second on the floor. So if they're going to be nominees named and discussed, and that motion needs to be withdrawn, or there'd have to be a motion to amend the motion on the floor, naming another.
I make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to name another nominee. Emily.
Emily, Emily Senyard.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So that motion will require a second to move forward.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So.
The new, new motion on the floor for Emily Senyard as chairperson, the original motion dies? Is that correct?
No. No.
No.
That's right. You have to vote on the, now you're, now you're voting on the motion to amend.
Motion to amend. So we'll vote to amend the original motion of Butler to the new motion of Senyard.
That is correct.
Is there any additional discussion on that before we call that?
For what happens, I think this is going to mess up.
Well, the way, the way the original motion was worded by Ms. Qualls was to name Mr. Butler, which essentially dispensed with other nominations.
So we should just withdraw hers and just have?
Could do that, but she hasn't. So there's been a motion to amend. Mr. Anderson seconded it. If this motion passes, then that means that there's a motion to nominate, to form both Mr. Butler and Ms. Senyard to be chairperson. And then we'll have to take action on those two people. You're right. I, I understand it seems.
I'm glad you do. That's why you're the attorney. That's why you get paid.
Okay, so we have to take a mo, we have to take action on the motion to amend right now, which would essentially add Ms. Senyard to the, to the slate of persons.
Mr. Anderson wants to withdraw his second on, on the amendment. Is there a second on the amendment? So for lack of a second, the amendment dies. We will vote on the first motion unless there's any other amendments that would like to be made.
There's a motion on the floor to, to name Mr. Butler chairman of the Planning Commission. If this motion passes, Mr. Butler's the chairman.
Any additional discussion before I call the question? Johnson.
Ms. Qualls.
Yes, aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
I abstain from voting for myself. So next item will be item B. Item A is complete. Next item will be item B, PC Resolution PC 02-22. The vice chairperson, the current vice chairperson is Mr. Anderson. Is there?
Commissioner Butler.
Before I entertain your motion, would you prefer I take nominations or prefer I take a motion for the seat? What is easier in, in process?
Your privilege, sir.
By your professional experience.
My professional experience, I would, I would, if there are going to be discussions to be brought about, the simpler way, the simpler way is just don't have a motion and a second. Have an open discussion about who may be interested in, and at that point, offer a motion when there's a definitive.
So let's open discussion. If there's anyone interested, speak, or if anyone has a, an interest, a party they'd like to discuss on.
Emily. Emily. Hey, Emily. I'm talking to you.
Yes.
Are you interested?
I would be happy for whatever someone thinks I'm capable of.
Any additional discussion or someone like to make a motion?
I, I love moments like this when you get to brag with your, brag on your teammates. Emily has shown nothing but professionalism the entire time. She's extremely knowledgeable. She asks amazing questions. She's respectful. I can't think of a better person to step into the chairperson's spot if they're not available. Emily would definitely receive my nomination.
Is that a motion to nominate or?
No, this is a discussion. But if you would like to make a motion, I will make it.
Continue discussion until there's a nomination made. Is there any other qualified candidates that like to say they would like to be interested or they'd like to discuss about other? Being none, I will entertain a motion to appoint the vice chairperson.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Emily Senyard for vice chairperson.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion before I call the question? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
So sorry, Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Next, we will go to PC Resolution PC 03-22. Our current first secretary is Ms. Haley Shulist.
I've been happy being the secretary, so.
A secretary is important just for flexibility to be able to sign plats when plats are needed from our.
I do work from home.
And Ms. Shulist has been great.
I would like to make a motion that Ms. Shulist stay in that position.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? We have a motion to appoint Ms. Shulist as first secretary. We'll call the question. Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Abstained.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will go to item D, PC Resolution 04-22. The second secretary, currently Ms. Senyard fills that spot. We, so we will be making, having a new second secretary. Would anyone like to make, have a discussion about, does anyone have interest?
Can you tell me what the second secretary does?
The second secretary would sign a plat and if the first secretary was unavailable.
Mr. Anderson, would you be interested in doing that position?
I would have done it in the past. I'd be glad to do it again.
Then I nominate Mr. Anderson to that position.
Motion to nominate is what it says. So just to ensure your, your intention was to appoint Mr. Anderson into second secretary, and there's a second.
Yes, that was my intention.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
If, if, if we get a chance to nominate a second person, I would nominate Commissioner McDonald.
Any additional discussion before I called the, to question the appointment at hand? Ms. Johnson?
I'd like to withdraw my name.
Before you call that, Mr. Anderson has asked if you would, if you could remove his name from, from second secretary. So we're going to ask the motion and the second if they would entertain that.
Sure.
Mayor.
I'm not sure that I want to. Okay. I'll withdraw if you want, if you want to be taken off of there.
Do, do I have a motion to not, or to appoint a, a second secretary?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for Chris McDonald to become the second secretary.
We have a motion. Is there a second? There's a second, Mr. Anderson? Any additional discussion before I call the question, the appointment of the second secretary? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Abstained.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Um, I think. Ms. Senyard, I will have you join, join me over here. Let's swap with you. Thank you, guys, for your patience with that. We, and congratulations, everybody. We will move to, give them time. Okay, we'll go to item two, PC Resolution PC 06-22, non-residential building permit, Vintage Millworks Campus Office Building Map 018, Parcel 36. Applicant James Dunn, Vintage Millworks Incorporated. Staff, I'll let you give just a little background there.
Mr. Donovanage Millworks has been in probably six, seven months ago, has discussed bringing the former Stewart Lumber property, buying that and bringing his office from Nashville out to Fairview. In doing so, he has presented a plan to add on to the front of that building for offices. That building is currently a metal building. The extent of the addition with the wording in the design review mentions bringing that to Planning Commission as an approval for that design. And before they did a full design for that with architectural imaging, I did want to bring that forward for the approval of the board for that section only to be approved, not making the entire building come up, but just that addition area and then allowing staff to approve that to designer view manual for that exterior.
Any discussion or questions?
Just to be clear, Mr. Sullivan, does it sound like there are any sort of issues with the request? There's no reason why we shouldn't.
That building is, it's a building on Highway 96 that's very difficult to see. The natural landscape buffer that's there keeps it from being visible from public way. But these improvements will only make that building better for the area. There will be other side improvements brought forward at some point that he's not ready to do yet from what he's said, and those will all have to meet standards as well. But for this, there would be no reason that I could see there being any issue as long as just that additional area is brought up to standard.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Butler, I believe the applicant is here if anyone wanted to hear from him for any reason.
Questions for the applicant? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC 06-22.
I'll second the motion.
Calley, Jenkins. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Abstained.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Calley. I'm so sorry, I already called you. Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three, PC Resolution PC-07-22, residential site plan modification, Aiden Woods subdivision, section two, 35 lots on 31.4 acres. Map 046B, parcels one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 11.03. Property owners, Brandon Robertson, A1 Home Builders Incorporated, applicant Adam Sanders, SEC Civil.
You, you might recall that this section, section two of Aiden Woods came forth for approval early in the year of 2021. That approval went through and went to grading permit and ready for construction, had pre-construction meeting, then went to grading permit. Item that's here is basically only an adjustment in grading. The number of lots and everything else is, is exactly the same. And some of the EPSC erosion control measures that support that modification to grading. But per our standards, per our regs, any change in the approved site plan has to then come back to Planning Commission. So that's really the only thing that this is, is because of some alter, alterations in the grading itself, it had to come back before the board, so.
Thank you, sir. Some adjustments were made from the original engineer plans, and now, now that they've been adjusted, they had to be resubmitted, reviewed by staff and now approved by, is that correct? So there's no changes in the overall design or layout. Just simply some adjustments from the engineering standpoint to ensure that it still functions and works as intended.
You know why the changes were requested or why they're needed?
I, I can let the engineer address that if they're here or the applicant.
Good to state your name for me, sir.
Good evening. My name is Awas Ahmed with SEC, the Design Consultants. So basically, the changes are only to prepare the lots for the building pads, and that's it. Roads are still the same. Roadway profiles are still the same. Drainage are still in place, same pipes. No changes are being done except for the grading, just to prepare the lots for the building pad, and that's it.
So you're doing a, a more of a mass grading plan for individual lots to prep for future building?
The, the initial grading didn't show any pad grading, but after the home builder figured out what type of homes they want to put on each lot, they provided the footprint, and we prepared a lot grading specifically for each lot to fit the home on, on the pad itself. So that's about it.
Could I ask you, would you happen to know what type homes this builder plans to put on these lots?
Unfortunately, we don't have information about the architectural design of the homes. This is, probably the planning department can answer about this because they have to submit this for the building permit, and they have to approve all the building material used in each home. But we're just do the civil design and all the things related to the civil design.
Okay.
The zoning would be an R20 zoning. I don't think currently R20 zoning has any requirements of exterior materials or things like that, like a, a pod would, would possibly have that over. So I don't, I don't think there's any, any building permits that I put, you know, applied for at this point either. We did ask the applicant when they first submitted this, what their, their plans were, and the engineer said to, to build something similar to what was in Castleberry. It was an answer that we had from original meeting, but that there's nothing in writing that requires what it has to be.
Mr. Sullivan, was there anything in particular that you wanted to add to the discussion?
No, I was going to say pretty much what Mr. Butler said. With it being a straight zone, we don't see any architectural characteristics or anything until building permits brought forward, and there are no requirements for those.
Thank you, sir.
I make a motion. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Butler.
Mayor, I apologize. Just one question that not pertaining to this section, but we just had the section three phase up there. There was a question earlier in comments asking about another access point that Phase Three shows the plans for, for future connection to, to crowcut out there on another section or whatever. Just to answer that question, I'm trying to make those notes.
So the question about the construction entrance?
I was just making note of, of, there's a future entrance planned from a crowcut on another standpoint.
Yeah, and the construction entrance for the, for Phase Three will be off crowcut.
Okay, no, that's good, that's good.
Yeah, so no construction entrance will go through the existing Phase One.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the Resolution 07-22.
Rainey, Calley. Additional discussion?
I, I believe that it would be useful just to recall the citizens' comments earlier. One gentleman, Alfred Hayman, had concerns of whether or not the developer, the builder, had any appropriate license for building the road. Mr. Sullivan, who would be the appropriate contact for him to reach out to find that information?
He, he is welcome to submit an open records request to CD of Fairview specifically stating his question, and we'll provide whatever information we can based off his open records request.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Calley. Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
And Mr. Butler.
Aye. Thank you.
I'm going to accuse myself from items four, five, and six. I don't have any ownership or financial interest at this time, just potential future interest.
Okay, if y'all bear with me, I'm going to try this.
New business, item 5, PC Resolution PC-08-22 Rezoning Old Nashville Road Project, 6.99 acres, MAP 042, Parcel 65.03 Current zoning RS40 Residential Single Family. Proposed zoning R20 Residential. Property owner, Tim Mangrum, Innovative Construction. Any questions? Discussion staff, do you have anything for us on it?
Staff, we don't. Straight zoning.
Anyone have a question for the applicant? Should I ask him to speak? Tim, would you like to tell us about your application?
So we've, or I have acquired three tracks here contiguous to one another and the intent would be for a half acre lot subdivision. So we're looking at somewhere between 20 to 30 lots. We haven't got into that portion yet because it's all, you know, discontingent on zoning.
Ms. Senyard, I know this is a formality, but could you just state your name, address for the record so we can have, there's been no proper identification, we need to make sure.
Tim Mangrum, 7326 Fernvale Road.
Again, I understand the...
My apologies, first try.
Okay.
You're good. So it's 6.99 acres and you're doing how many lot, how many houses?
Well, this is just, if you look on down, there's two more of the same. So we've got three lots with approximately 21 acres.
Okay. Any additional questions or discussion or would anyone like to make a motion?
Tim, is this gonna be phased or is it all gonna happen at the same time?
I would prefer the same time with the Water Authority. They may, you know, if we go over 20 lots, they'll probably make us phase it in 20 lot increments, which is what they typically do, but we would prefer to do it all in one.
And for what it's worth, 2040 Plan shows this as split between two different zonings, either the legacy neighborhood with the residential medium where an R20 zoning is totally appropriate or the rural, sorry, the transition corridor where R20 might not be appropriate. So I guess we just have a choice in this situation on which one that we think would fit. If we treat it as legacy residential medium, then R20 is absolutely in accordance with the 2040 Plan.
I'll offer there that if it's on sewer, then it probably is considered a legacy neighborhood.
Those lots across the street, I think that's Deer Park Subdivision. I think I'm reading that right. Those are 20,000 feet roughly as well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jenkins? Okay, did you get it? Sorry, I'm not gonna be good at this yet. Can you roll call?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, same thing all over again. New business, item 6, PC Resolution PC-09-22 Rezoning Old Nashville Road Project, 7.19 acres, MAP 042, Parcel 65.04. Current zoning RS40 Residential Single Family. Proposed zoning R20 Residential. Property owner, Tim Mangrum, Innovative Construction.
Is identical to the prior one, correct?
Oh, I think I actually read 6. No, I read 5 before, this is 6.
I know, but I think it should've been 4.
Should have 4, 5, and 6, it's all pretty much the same.
You read, you read, you read number 4, but you said 5.
I'm going off the email. Because I'm doing it on my iPad and y'all sent a different one. You printed a different one than you sent us. Yes. Sorry.
The previous item...
You removed the Board of Zoning Appeals, but you, and you moved it all up.
That's correct. So you read with Resolution PC 0922, which is the correct resolution.
Okay. Okay. So it's number 4, but I, number 5. The last one I called number 4 and it was number...
It was number 4.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to approve Resolution 9-22?
Second. Roll call.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Ms. Senyard?
Aye. Okay, this one is number 6. PC Resolution PC-10-22 Rezoning Old Nashville Road Project, 7.19 acres, MAP 042, Parcel 65.06. Current zoning RS40 Residential Single Family. Proposed zoning R20 Residential. Property owner, Tim Mangrum, Innovative Construction. Any discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve PC Resolution Number 10-22?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye. That's what, are you back? Please?
I thought you were back, but I was like...
Keith told me to stay back. All right, we'll go to item 7. PC Resolution PC-11-22 Rezoning Cleveland Lane Project, .31 acres, MAP 22, Parcel 145.04. Current zoning RS15 Residential Single Family. Proposed zoning C1 Commercial. Property owner, First Federal Bank. Applicant, Timothy Mangrum, Innovative Construction, and David Hudgens. You could state your name for us and tell us what you got here.
Tim Mangrum, 7326 Fernvale Road. So this lot was more or less a leftover piece of property from Leverett Meadows that was approved sometime early 2000s. And the way it's currently, it does show RS15, but it's an unbuildable lot because it's just shy of the 15,000 feet. And Micah, please correct me if I'm wrong or misstate any of this. But, so it's currently an unbuildable lot. And since the lot does front on Highway 96 as well as Cleveland Lane, it appears to me that it'd be a good spot for a small office building for a construction company or maybe a real estate company.
Any questions?
Yeah, not really questions, just statements, just more 2040 Plan research stuff. So the 2040 Plan shows this lot as a rural corridor and that would permit agricultural or RS40 zoning. Appropriate land use is agricultural or single-family detached residential. However, it is the final or first lot, depending on which direction you're traveling on that street, on that corridor. The next door, across the street from Cleveland Lane, so the one that would be to the southeast of the picture there, that would be a commercial center. So in that situation, the lots directly across the street would, C1 Commercial would totally classify as something that would fit into that area. I guess the question for us just becomes at this point, where do we draw the hardline boundaries? Do we have Cleveland Lane or a road like that actually be the official hardline stop and not allow anything beyond that to be commercial? Or do we go ahead and say, like he said before, it's not a one acre buildable lot, it's three tenths of an acre and you can't build an RS15 home on there, much less an RS40 lot? So yeah, I just want to know from you guys what you think about that and what you'd like to do.
Well, you have that storage facility, like right on one side and then there's that, I don't know, if it's an HVAC? So it would fit certainly in the theme of...
Commercial center.
Commercial. So I think it's fine.
Yeah.
So, Mr....
Yes, sir.
Well, just for clarification, so everyone understands where the process, not speaking to preference whether or not this is proposed for rezoning or not, but when the property was annexed into the city or zone, I believe in 2002, the annexation was brought in as an RS15 and the ordinance, the BOC ordinance that annexed the property deemed the property to be a nonbuildable lot. Now, we assume that that was nonbuildable residential, right? I'd say you assume that because it's less than the 15,000 square feet, so we have to go by that, that number. So if this were to pass the Planning Commission tonight, we're not suggesting that it do or that it does or does not, but when it goes to the BOC for consideration, there will be two items to be considered. First is the rezoning of the, from R15 to the commercial, C1. Two, so that would be one consideration. The second consideration would be an amendment to the ordinance that deemed this as a nonbuildable lot, amending that ordinance so that no longer be designated as a nonbuildable lot. Right now, it's deeded as a nonbuildable lot based on that approval at that time. So if this passes tonight, and again, we're not suggesting it should or should not, but when it gets to the BOC, there will be two matters to consider. The rezoning and the removal of the designation as a nonbuildable lot. In fairness to, to Mr. Mangrum for bringing that up or bringing this forward, the nonbuildable lot designation will carry until such time as it is removed. So there'll have to be a consideration of that. Outside of that, just want to give that disclaimer.
Any questions or discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC 1122?
Second.
Callie McDonald? Any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Ms. Qualls? Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard? Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 8, PC Resolution PC-12-22 Rezoning and Final Platte Columbus Cove Project, 4.77 acres, MAP 022, Parcel 164 and 16501. Current zoning, Commercial General and RS40 Residential Single Family. Proposed zoning RM12 Multifamily and R20 Residential. Property owner is blank on my sheet. Is it up here?
I didn't get it on the agenda, it is on the...
Platinum Equities LC and Jonathan Caldwell.
Timothy Mangrum, 7326 Fernvale Road. We all got that now. Sorry, the engineer is supposed to have been here to speak on the behalf of this tonight and I don't know where he is, so...
You could just tell us a little information on this one that you've got here.
So the big track, we're actually discussing two tracks here. So the bigger track is currently zoned, commercial?
It is zoned CG.
Yeah, then the house, now we have acquired both of these tracks, but the house is R40 and that is, just to give you an idea of where we're talking about, that's straight across the T-Dot Garage, right next door, right across the street. So we're proposing we put the house on a 20,000 or a half acre lot, 20,000 foot lot or a half acre, and give the balance of that one acre lot that the house currently sits on now to the big track and then build townhomes on the big track.
How many in total?
We haven't got that far because it's so contingent on zoning, of course, but somewhere in the mid 40s is our, just a rough thought.
Ms. Collins?
Just a point of clarification and I may be... I apologize, that's answering my own question. Read and think.
Any additional discussion or questions?
Yes, sir. 2040 Plan list, let me actually read my notes so I don't stumble over my words. 2040 Plan designates these lots as a transition corridor along Highway 96 and unlike the previous item where the previous item was right on the border between commercial and, I forget, transition corridor or whatever, rural, this one is actually smack dab in the middle of that section of land. Appropriate land uses are single-family detached residential, office, and civic institutional. Appropriate zoning is RS40. Therefore, RM12 and R20 are both out of alignment with our 2040 Plan for the future at Fairview. That's all.
Additional discussion? Ms. Collins, sir?
My question did come back to me. Just as a point of clarification, is this parcel currently one of the parcels where it's the same parcel, but there is a zoning line that crosses? That parcel or is this two parcels?
No, sir, these are two separate parcels that in the process of rezoning, they are also being re-subdivided. So each of the parcels, as they are currently, have a standalone zoning that is fully on that property. But with the re-zoning, there's also a redrawing of lines and there would not be a way of doing one without the other without creating an issue of property, having one property with two zonings, which is why it comes forward as a final platte and a zoning at the same.
Question's procedural one. Which is whether or not you can properly offer a motion to simultaneously rezone two pieces of property that are currently zoned? And I'm not sure that we can. I don't believe there's an opportunity to zone property en masse. You can do an overlay, but I don't think we can zone it. And that, that's, that's my question. I believe it would be proper to consider the zoning of the current property footprint, Commercial General, to another zone and consider the zoning of the current property RS40 to another zone. But I don't believe we can procedurally offer one motion to rezone two separate pieces of property under two separate zoning classifications.
So if we entertain it tonight, we need to have two motions? Or do you need to have two business items?
I believe that, I believe that would be correct.
Can I throw us...
You're thinking it needs to be bifurcated, it needs to be one.
That, yes, sir, that's correct.
Let me ask a question. So since we're taking away roughly a half acre from the parcel that has the house on it, so the half acre that we take away, does it stay zoned? Does it go zoned R20?
That, so the smaller parcel with the house on it, which is RS40, you're asking it be rezoned to RS20?
Well, the house is currently sitting on a tick over an acre.
I understand that, sir, but it's currently zoned RS40.
Correct.
Whatever it's on, it's on, is zoned RS40.
Yes, sir.
So the request is that property be rezoned to R20?
Just a half acre of it.
The full property is being rezoned, all of this is R20, correct? It's going to RS20? The commercial site?
No.
And...
No, the commercial site, we're asking RM12.
Okay, so if that's the case, we're not, this is going to require two motions? Yes, I, I don't...
I think the confusion is also that parcel with the house on it is getting its lines redrawn and half of it's becoming RM12 and half of it's becoming RS, R20.
I understand, so there are two items that are going to have to take place for, for that, the Commercial General property, the larger tract of property, can clearly be offered up for a motion to rezone from Commercial General to R20.
Is that Parcel 164?
RM12.
Or, I'm sorry, RM12. There's no issue with that at all. On the, the smaller parcel that currently contains the house that will be half RM12 and half RS20 is going to require a separate action. Because there, that's correct.
You gotta subdivide them.
That's, you'll... That's the issue, is being able to subdivide the property and it still being within...
Right, so...
Zone.
One zoning.
So you can, you can do that, but what the, what we're going to have to do to get this correct is the CG property, there will be a motion to rezone that from Commercial General to RM12. That will be a motion on its own. The sec... The second would be rezone the RS40 property to RS20, subdivide that property, and the remainder parcel without the house be rezoned in a subsequent act to RM12. Correct. Right, we, we would not, you, you can do that, and that's, and that's fine, but that, but that's, that's going to be the process to make sure we, we do this cleanly. So in this case, the only concern that goes before the Planning Commission would be, and I, I would suggest that we do do this, I'm not suggesting we don't, I'm suggesting we do. My suggestion would be that the remainder that's crafted out be rezoned RM, RM12. So you're going to have a commercial general to RM12, and RS40 to R20, the 20,000 footprint of the existing home, and an RS40 to an RM12, the remainder of the parcel that contains the home. Those three motions will, will complete the task, but I don't believe we can have one motion to complete all three of those and be successful. So my suggestion is, my belief is that they should, that they're all proper and the zoning is proper, but the method should be three, three votes.
I think that'll work fine.
Do the property lines have to be, like, can that be all done tonight, or does that have to be? I mean, if it's, if it's RS40, it has to be rezoned to 20 before he can redraw the property line, right?
No, sir. He, you could, you could, you could.
We would have an RS, we would have an RS20 inside an RS40 then, wouldn't we?
No, and we, we would have to prepare a new legal description for both parcels, and when those legal descriptions are drawn up, that legal description was to be zoned, each one of those two zones.
And the city would accept that at that time. So procedurally, there's no issue with what takes place as far as what comes back to us for the lot, but the ability to vote all three en masse is not a proper vote. So outside of that, we could do the three votes, the survey comes back to the city, that, and we would just simply identify it as the remainder property, and, and we would move forward with that thing. So once we receive the survey for the remainder property, we'd move the lot line and all, all items take place tonight, and then we would have that cleaned up when this goes to the BOC. For the formal, we would be able to have all that stuff done in, in advance of that. So if this was at the BOC level, I would suggest that we're, we're too far ahead. At the Planning Commission level, I believe we can do this, stick on the same schedule, but we need the requirement of the three votes.
Well, wait a minute, I mean, why is it such a big hurry? Can't we just do this next month? I mean, it's just rezoning it, right? I mean, you're saying this now, but we're all confused, we've been here since five o'clock. You know, what you're saying now is, you know, we're all looking at it different ways. Wouldn't it be just easier, instead of just talking about it between yourselves and just table it to the next month?
If that's the preference of the Planning Commission, sir, they're welcome to do that.
Okay, because the way you're talking, okay, somebody's going to come up with something and boom, you know, but.
No, sir, that's not.
I think we're, I think it's just a little confusing right now.
That, that's not what I'm suggesting.
The way you were talking, it sounds like that's what you were suggesting.
But it's not, the, the, the Planning Commission, it's a privilege of the Planning Commission to ask me to just sit silently, right? So if you want to make a motion to do that, I'd be glad to adhere to that motion. Outside of that, outside of that, my suggestion is to simply assist you with a vote. There's a motion and a second on the floor, my job is simply, there may not be a motion on the floor. So, so with that, again, there's no issue with the staff, there's no suggestion that this not be done. The only suggestion is that we need three motions to do it to accomplish the same goal. So it's a, we, the preference is that it be done, it's a simple task.
I'd like to make a motion, we defer this until next month.
Rainey and Anderson, second? For deferment to the next Planning Commission meeting, that should give time to, to review or adjust.
I guess I'm confused on what we're going to review and adjust in a month, because we, we've submitted this a month ago, so I feel like we've done our part. So anytime, I'm like, I can't speak for the developers, every time a developer comes up here to try to get something approved and it gets deferred, that just, that's another month. I know a month's not a ton of time, but it's one-twelfth of the year, so. Just my thought.
I guess the goal would be to have the three items listed more clearly, based off the conversation from Mr. Kelly of commercial general to the RS40, and then the, or sorry, yes.
RS40 moved to R20, and RS40, part of it moved to RM12, and then?
Of course, it moved to RM12.
Yeah.
To more define those lines of what's going to happen on that upper parcel? Or is that shown on that?
Move from one line item to three line items, and they're not specific, and so it's all understood.
Would it?
It's all verbal, it's not written as it should be.
Would it be all right with anyone else if we were to at least vote on the main parcel tonight, or have a discussion regarding the main parcel, so he can move forward with at least, I mean, I think that.
I think if he talks to the, to the city people here, he can get it straightened out, and I think we should just defer it till next month.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor for deferment, we have a second. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could add one little additional layer to this, I could also maybe make it simpler. Like I mentioned before, in a transition corridor, like we've planned for this, neither RM12 nor R20 are appropriate zonings. So we could have a motion on the floor that is a motion to not have this property rezoned for either of them, and that one motion can cover everything. If that is the will of the board.
We have a motion and a second right now.
Yeah, I know. But there's a chance that it might not pass.
I don't think the desire of the board is to not approve this, I think the desire of the board is to get the documents correct, so I think that's where I'm at on the thing. I just feel like the documents need to be in order, not to disapprove it all day long.
Any additional discussion?
I'm still trying to figure out, I really want to hear feedback, please. How does an RM12 multifamily zoning fit in a transition corridor?
Mr. Butler, at the risk of being argumentative, I don't, I don't believe it's appropriate for one member of the Planning Commission to request from other members of the Planning Commission their suggestions or justifications for a vote on a rezoning. I, I think that's an improper discussion, there's a motion and a second on the floor.
To be clear, because that was about me, so I want to understand, it's in, please.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to defer. Now, I think if we have that, then there, but I think a motion and a second on the floor, and then a question about justification of a matter that's not before this board for vote is improper.
So now's not the time for that discussion, but before the motion would have been an appropriate time for that discussion?
Possibly. I, I don't think they can be compelled to give an answer.
Oh, no one could be compelled to do anything, but I can ask, I'd love to hear people's opinions, we're a team up here.
Understood.
We have a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Ms. Qualls?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
No.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to bonds and letters of credit, there are none this evening. Reports for discussion and information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan?
I think I say this every time we have a work session, but thank you all for being here at the work session, five o'clock was early, I think we got a lot done. Kevin and I were talking between the work session and the meeting, I think that gives us a really good direction where to go, I think we had some good discussion, but also the, the ability for us to go through and put all of this into writing now, and then bring it back for you. So I thank you very much for being a part and having good discussion for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City manager, Ms. Collins?
Everything Micah said, there's a lot, you guys put a lot of time and effort into all of this, and we're, as we go forward getting this, this stuff, this zoning work done, if you look back at the last 12 months, and when we get to that point, that's a lot of work by a planning commission in a short period of time, so I just want to thank all of you for that work in advance for the next couple of months as we get through that, because this community is going to see the benefit of that for the next 25 years. So you shouldn't take it lightly, the effort that you put in to get that done, and that's a, that's a big win for the city of Fairview, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn?
Nothing really tonight, except that just wanted to thank the city for letting me serve as the city engineer. Today is my one year with the city, it's been, it's been a busy year, I think we've made some great strides forward. It feels like a month ago, we've been really busy, I just wanted to say I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you for, for everything you do for us. City attorney, Mr. Potter? Communication from the planning commission members, Mr. McDonald?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Jenkins? No, I'm good. Mr. Anderson?
I'm good, thank you.
Schulist?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Kelly?
Want to thank the staff for their work, and our engineers just scared me, I thought he was getting ready to quit when he said.
Ms. Qualls?
I just want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and just saying your, you know, giving your thoughts and everything, thank you very much for coming.
Mary Rainey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Senyard?
I appreciate the appointment, and hopefully y'all get better at it.
No, congratulations to all for their new positions, thank you to staff for putting in that workshop today, it's a culmination of a, a lot of stuff kind of coming together in relation to the discussion we had about future land use, future maps, I imagine after we put this residential together, we'll probably have a discussion where we sit down and vision out transition, we figure out where it's going to adjust, and we're going to kind of really dig into that a little bit more, as these things start to check off the list and we put off this, all this work in, so that discussion's going to come, so be, be thinking about it, be studying it, as we get some of those new zonings, and, and thank you guys for continuing to keep us, you know, push forward. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.